Good evening. Welcome to the November 13, 2012 Planning Commission meeting. I'm going to call this meeting now to order. This meeting is in compliance with the open meeting law. It has been properly noticed and posted in compliance with the open meeting law. We're live on KCLV-TV. Channel 2 in this meeting will be rebroadcast Saturday at 10:00 a.m., the following Monday at midnight, and Tuesday at 5:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m. If you could stand and please join us for the pledge of allegiance.
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Clerk. Could you please call the roll? Chair Quinn?
Here.
Vice Chair Flengus?
Here.
Commissioner Goines?
Present.
Commissioner Truesdale?
Present.
Commissioner Moody?
Here.
Commissioner Schlotman?
Present.
Commissioner Bonar? Thank you, Madam Clerk. Regarding the public comments, all comments made under this item for specific action items will be cross-referenced to those items. If there are any members of the public who wish to speak under this portion of the agenda, they may speak now. If not, we'll move on to number five. Now, we're going to ask Commissioner Flengus to please approve the minutes of the Planning Commission meeting of October 9, 2012.
Madam Chairman, I move to approve the minutes of the Planning Commission meeting for October 9, 2012.
Thank you, Commissioner. And that motion passes. Any items from the Planning Commission, staff, and/or the applicant that wish to be stricken or held in abeyance to a future meeting may be brought forward and acted upon at this time. We'll now move over to our housekeeping items. Are there any items that the commissioners, the staff, the applicants, or member of the public would like to pull forward for action?
Chairwoman Quinn, there are no such items.
Thank you, Mr. Kepke. There's no one here that wishes to speak on those, so we'll just move on to the one motion, one vote.
To consent.
I'm sorry, to the consent items. Consent items are considered routine by the Planning Commission and may be enacted by one motion. However, any item may be discussed if a commissioner member or a member of the applicant so desires. We have two, number seven and number eight. And number seven is TMP 47013, Grand Teton and TP. The applicant is D.R. Horton Incorporated, the owner, Fort Grand LLC, for possible action on a request for a tentative map for an 183-lot, single-family residential subdivision at the northeast corner of Grand and Teton Drive and TP Lane. This falls in Ward 6. Councilman Ross and staff recommends approval. Staff. Okay. And then, number TMP 47031, Madison Grove at the Providence Phase 3. The applicant owner is Greystone Nevada LLC, for possible action on a request for a tentative map for a 65-foot, single-family residential subdivision adjacent to the west side of Wallop Highway, approximately 600 feet north of Elkhorn. This also falls in Councilman Ross's ward. Commissioner Flengus? Oh, is there anyone here that wishes to speak on these items? If so, come forward. If not, we'll have a motion. They're on the one motion, one vote.
Madam Chairman, on the consent items, agenda portion, I move to approve items number seven and eight.
Thank you. And that was on the consent agenda, items seven and eight. Please cast your votes. And that motion passes. Now, we really are-
Madam Chair, if I can just indicate that both items seven and eight are final action in the absence of an appeal within seven days.
Okay, final action. That means that's it. Okay. Now, we really are moving on to the one motion, one vote. The following are items that may be considered in one motion and one vote. They're considered routine, non-public, and public hearing items. And public hearings and non-public hearings will be opened at one time. Any person representing an application, or a member of the public, or a member of the Planning Commission not in agreement with the conditions and all standard conditions for the application recommended by our staff should request to have this item removed from this part of the agenda. Starting with number nine is SUP 47007. The applicant is East Valley Family Services, and the owner is EF Team LLC, for public action on a request for a special use permit for an existing 4,800-square-foot social service provider at 1800 East Sahara Avenue, Suite Number 111, following Councilman Coffins, Ward 3. The number 10 is SUP 47041. The applicant is Zie Gang Wong, owner PKI Rainbow Promenade LC, for possible action on a request for a special use permit for a proposed 4,992-square-foot supper club at 2051 North Rainbow Boulevard in Suite 102. This falls in Councilman Barlow's Ward 5. Number 11 is SUP 47111. The applicant is T-Mobile. The owner is the city of Las Vegas. For possible action on a request for a special use permit to remove six existing antennas and install six new antennas and one 12-inch microwave dish at the 75-foot centerline of an existing 84-foot-tall wireless communication facility, stealth design, at 2801 West Oki Boulevard. This falls in Councilwoman Tarkanian's Ward 1. And that's it for-- oh, there's one more. Number 12 is Vacation 46925. The applicant owner is Robert L. Famon, 1995, Irrevocable Trust et al., for possible action on a petition to vacate U.S. government patent easements. They're generally located on the south side of Deer Springs Way, approximately 330 feet west of Grand Canyon Road. This falls in Councilman Ross's Ward 6.
Madam Chair.
And also, we have 13, 14, and 15 that are related items, which are Vacation 47029. Applicant owner is Toll South LV LLC, for possible action on a petition to vacate portions of two public sewer and drain easements, generally located at Pecos Breeze Drive and east of Fox Hill Drives. This falls in Councilman Beers Ward 2. Number 14 is TMP 47025, the tentative map related to Vacation 47029, Santa Luis at Summerlin Village 23A. The applicant owner is Toll South Las Vegas LLC, for possible action on a request for a tentative map for a 53-foot, single-lot, family residential subdivision on 16.04 acres at the southeast corner of Paseo Breeze Drive and Fox Hill Drive. APN numbers are 1-7-3-4-3-1-2-0-0-2 and 0-0-3. P-C Plan Community Zone is SF3, Single Family Detached, Summerlin West Land Use Designation. This falls in Ward 2, Councilman Beers Ward. And along with companion item number 15, SDR 46990, is a Site Development Plan Review, Public Hearing, Applicant Owner, Foundation for Independent Tomorrow, for possible action on a request for a major amendment on an approved site development plan, SDR 7218, for an 8,650-square-foot, two-story addition to an addition 12,000-- sorry, to an existing, not addition, to an existing 12,600-square-foot office building on 1.04 acres at 1931 Stella Lake Street. APN number is 13921313018. C-PB Plan Business Park, Zone 5. This is in Councilman Barlow's Ward. Is there anyone here that wishes to speak on any of the public, on any of the one motion, one votes? If so, please come forward. If not, we'll look for a motion. Did you want to say anything, staff? No? Okay. No one here to speak on these items? Okay, thank you.
Madam Chairman, on the one motion, one vote portion of the agenda, I move to approve items number nine through 15.
And that motion passes.
Madam Chair, items number 10, 11, and 15 will go forward to the December 19 Planning Commission meeting. Items number nine, 12, 13, and 14 are final action in the absence of an appeal within 10 days. And let me just correct that. Item number 14 is final action in the absence of an appeal within seven days. Thank you.
Thank you. We're now ready to start the public hearing items, and the first one is number 16, SUP 46294. The applicant is 501 Fremont LLC, owner Fremont Las Vegas Boulevard, for possible action on a request for a special use permit for a proposed 15,317-square-foot tavern, limited establishment, at 107 South Las Vegas Boulevard. This falls in Councilman Barlow's Ward 5. May we please have the staff report at this time?
Madam Chair, before we begin, I have to abstain on this item as I've just entered into a contract with the property owners for a different property.
Thank you, Commissioner. Is the applicant present? Okay. Should we trail this item, Mr. Rankin?
We can.
I think we should. It's kind of a big little corner. Okay, so we'll trail this item, and we'll move on to number 17. And we do recognize that Commissioner Schlotman will be abstaining from that item, number Number 17 is an SUP applicant owner, Danielle Ekiyama, Ekiyamie, for possible action on a request for a special use permit for a proposed community residence with a waiver to allow a 516-foot distance separation from another community residence where 600 feet is required at 1912 Fontana Avenue. This falls in Commissioner Barlow's Ward 5. May we please have the staff report? And staff is recommending approval.
Madam Chair, staff recommends approval of this request as the use can be conducted in a manner that is compatible with the surrounding uses, and the availability of public services in the area will not be negatively impacted by the additional use.
Thank you. Could the applicant please come to the podium on this item? We'd like to see you and hear from you, and give your name and address for the record, and all that kind of stuff. So, good evening, applicant.
Is it on?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Daniela Keo-Yame. I'm the applicant for proposed number 17.
So, tell us a little bit about your, you know, the kind of your application. Have you ran one of these before? Is this your first? Is this one of many? What kind of people are going to be here? You know, just give us a little background on you and this item.
Okay. This is just going to be, this is my first home. It's just going to be an elderly home, basically. Just elderly persons without homes that don't have the funds to accommodate, to get their own apartment or place to live. A lot of the residents here will have no family, or their family that has cast them away, so no one to care for them. It's just a Category 1 endorsement that we're asking for, which basically is just determined by, the resident has to get from the point that they sleep to out the door in case of an emergency with less than four minutes, in less than four minutes on their own. That's how they categorize under the NAC codes.
Daniela, you do understand, when I was reading the report, it said that you could have seven beds, but you're only getting up to six. Is that correct, Director?
Per the information that the applicant has provided to us, based on the square footage of the bedrooms in the residence, they will be limited to six.
Six, right. So, you understand that? Okay.
I also gave you, I'm not sure if you guys received it, a new justification letter, an updated justification letter, as well as some petition forms that I went around. Did you guys get that? Okay, good. I did go around door-to-door to people in the neighborhood, as many as I could, to get a signature, just a proposal, signature, anyone who supported. Everyone that I spoke with, face-to-face, they were all in support of the facility opening. I know that there are a few people in the neighboring surroundings that are opposed to this facility opening due to different reasons. A lot of them said because the other facility that's already established, they were worried about people escaping the house and drowning in their pools, and also increased traffic and increased ambulance and things like that. The other facility has been open for three and a half years, a little over three and a half years. And even people down on that same street, you know, within that block, they're aware that the facility is open, but they have not had any problems with it. Other than that, I don't really, I can't really-
Sounds like a good start.
Yeah.
Thank you. Let's see if there's anybody here that wishes to speak on your item, and then we'll open it up to the Planning Commission.
Should I stay, or?
No, you can stay right there unless if we get too many people, and then we'll move you. Is there anybody here that wishes to speak on this item? If so, please come forward. Okay, Daniela, you can sit, probably. Yeah. Just so you guys know, we have two microphones, and we're going to, right over here, one at a time, sir, ma'am. And then, we have to stand by the microphone? You're not speaking? Okay, well, then let your friend come first. There you go. Right on.
Hold the ladies and gentlemen up.
Please state your name and address for the record, sir.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Daniel Deegan. For those who, many of you who do not know me, I have been an officer of the Rancho Manor Neighborhood Association for the last 12 years, president for some of that time. And I'm here to say that the Neighborhood Association and all the people who attend our meetings are opposed to this application, and let's set out a few reasons why. Again, because many of you are unfamiliar with us and our neighborhood, I'd like to point out that we have an excellent reputation for cooperation and collaboration with applicants. We are not a group of nimbies, and we are not a group of complainers who have nothing but negativity for the applicant. We have associated with other social service organizations. The last one, when I was president, was Bridge Counseling Associates, who came into the neighborhood with a very positive attitude, willing to explain to us what they were doing, show us, answer any questions. We became acquainted with them. We strongly supported their application, as we did in the past with West Care, Dr. Steinberg's facility, which was, again, taking detox patients from the emergency rooms and trying to put them back on the street. So, we are not opposed to social services or to helping our fellow man, but we are opposed to this application. In my time with the association, we have, I have seen the neighborhood angry three times. The last time, Commissioner Truesdale and Commissioner Goines will remember, one Douglas Lean, then employed by the Business Development Office, came into these chambers in the other building and announced that the commission should rubber stamp approval for 27-story condominiums at the corner of Martin Luther King and Alton Drive. They walked--
Mr.--
Madam, it's appropriate, because I want to point out that only in cases where applicants choose to ignore the residents, that we strongly protest, which this lady has. She made an extremely poor impression at the neighborhood meeting, announcing that she was entitled to a waiver and essentially defying any member of the public to question what she was doing. However, we're forced to do that.
Excuse me, Mr. Deegan. At your meeting, you said that you had a group of signatures from your neighbors. Do you have that so we can have it? Because she has hers here.
Pardon?
Do you have your signature so that our board can have it? Because she, yeah.
Yes, yes, we do. But I would like to save time for additional speaker to present that to you.
Absolutely. Just because we have hers, I want to make sure we have yours.
The, in fact, Director Fag will remember from the neighborhood meeting, the required neighborhood meeting, that the applicant both announced that the waiver had been approved, which he was required to set her straight as to the facts. She also announced that she was granting a neighborhood meeting to the residents. And again, he was required to set her straight that it was Commissioner Goines and the commission as a whole that required that at the last commission meeting.
Right.
She, her testimony is not always terminologically exact, and we resent that. She's one of the few applicants who have come in with an in-your-face attitude towards the neighbors and unwillingness to discuss the issues. These group homes are a serious problem, and there is a reason for the distance waiver. Unfortunately, they have a terrible reputation for employing illegal aliens, visa overstayers. I know some personally employed in facilities like this in our neighborhood, often unqualified. I watched a nurse from Lake Mead Hospital trying to set up one of these and to establish rotas of nurses and LPNs in their off-hours who would come in and watch these people.
Thank you, Mr. Deegan. We're going to have to move on to the next speaker, because we have a three-minute thing here, and I have to move on to the next speaker. So, we appreciate that you're here to represent, no, and that you're going to leave that.
We'll be taking up, because, again, for entirely valid reasons, you're not willing to listen, some of our objections to Title 19-4 and the NRS statutes 449--
Right.
--that essentially merge together homes for old elderly people who are essentially mentally clear and can be taken care of in a normal fashion, and Alzheimer's patients who come under the same rubric. This facility will be presented to you as one for elderly people with no place to live. It will turn into an Alzheimer's facility which warehouses and does not treat in a decent way. Seven people, they'll be told you, because my time is up, is overcrowding, and it will not be what it's presented to be.
Thank you, Mr. Deegan, sir.
I thank you for your indulgence, Madam.
Thank you, sir. Have a nice evening. Good evening, sir. Please state your name and address for the record.
Yes, William Stowjack, 1820 West Mesquite, Las Vegas, Nevada, Ward 5.
Good evening.
Been a resident there since 1972. I've got an extreme problem with this. One of the things, the question we've had quite often with the Planning Commission is we have a general plan, and the city spent a lot of money to come up with the general plan. Our neighborhood has been encroached on several times. We finally found a good solution with the Metropolitan Police Department Headquarters, which we supported wholeheartedly. Great infill. So, as Mr. Deegan said, we're not against progress. I've been involved with the Neighborhood Association since its inception. I've been the chairperson of it three years. We've never been confrontational, just as, we have more other things to do with our lives. This is warehousing. Why have the standard? The question I have for the applicant is why not do your homework and find out that you're going to have an uphill battle from the get-go? Why not select? We have a lot of houses in our neighborhood that are available. There's a lot of areas of Las Vegas. I also call into question the petition that she circulated. Are they tenants or homeowners? We have a lot of tenants in that neighborhood, unfortunately, that don't have a vested interest in our community. Our community's almost a nice little enclave secret. It was the first subdivision built west of downtown Las Vegas.
Right.
It's almost, we're almost to a point of getting a historical designation if we care to. It was built by Alan Marty Collins in 1963, the Collins Brothers. I had an aunt and uncle that lived here since '47, purchased a house there. My parents purchased a house there. That's the house I have now. This is unconscionable.
Okay. Thank you very much for coming down and taking the time to share your feelings with us.
Absolutely. I'll never hesitate on doing that.
We really appreciate it. We appreciate it very much, sir. Thank you. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. My name is Twi Lee. I live at 2000 Danby Avenue.
Hi, Mr. Lee.
Good evening. I would like to submit to the Planning Commission our neighborhood's four-page petition with 42 signatures.
Thank you. Could you hand that to the clerk, please?
Against the proposed SUP 46561. This petition has been based solely, whether on whether or not, to allow only 78% of 660 feet distance required between two group care businesses. And there are three homeowners in the neighborhood who wish to retract their signatures, which were signed on the applicant's petition. If you don't mind, I can name them and what--
No, that's okay. We have, we know. You don't have to name all of them.
Because you have their quote. I mean, they've written on that petition.
Okay, yeah, they have written on their cards as well. We have their cards, too.
So, because the applicant was misled, a couple of them, that's why I'm here to present that petition with those written from the owners.
Okay.
And that prompted us to have a question about the way in which the applicant's petition was conducted. And we would like to leave this to the judgment of the Commissioners.
Thank you very much, Mr. Lee. We appreciate it. And when we're done looking at it, it'll be on the record with the clerk. When we're finished with it, it'll be on the record with the clerk, so it's not going anywhere.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Good evening, ma'am. How are you?
I'm fine, thanks.
You look nice and purple.
Thank you. My name is Jean Zalorn. I live at 2000 Sunland Avenue, which is approximately a block and a half from this subject property.
Okay.
Excuse me if I read a little bit. I have lived at this location for 46 years.
Wow.
Rancho Manor is one of the oldest residential communities in Las Vegas. As president of the Rancho Manor Association for the third time, our board has worked diligently to maintain the integrity of our neighborhood, but not always with the success we would like. Some neighbors don't care. One man has had an automobile repair business in back of my house for years, having eight or nine cars there. And he's very clever. He lists them in his name, like he owns them.
You know, just before you go on, we can't talk about other things here, but I want you to call Neighborhood Services and report that tomorrow.
Oh, I have. We have Catwas time.
Okay, well, then, give the address to Doug before you leave, and we'll look into that.
Okay.
But let's just talk about this item right now.
The same property is located on Fontana. As stated previously by other objectors, please help us maintain the integrity of our neighborhood by denying this waiver. We do not need any further commercial ventures in our residential neighborhood. I don't think you would want it in yours. We don't want it in ours.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thanks a lot, Jean, for coming down. Good evening, sir.
Hello. My name is Brett Birdsong. I live at 3012 Mason Avenue, Las Vegas. I come in solidarity with a nearby neighborhood association. I am the president of the McNeil Neighborhood Association, one of the other neighborhood associations roughly on the four corners of the neighborhood, or of the intersection, Rancho and Charleston.
Right.
And I really come to make a general point, and that's that these are some of the finest and historic neighborhoods in Las Vegas. These ones that are close into the urban core, that are well-maintained, that are still mostly occupied by owner occupants who care deeply about the character of our neighborhoods. And we have only, only the general plan to stand back, to protect our interests. We're not the new Las Vegas with homeowners associations and the Summerlin Associations and CCNRs and extensive land use restrictions in the private law world. We rely on the public institutions, and that's the Planning Commission, the City Council, to basically enforce, as our interests require, the policies that we have agreed upon as public bodies and as citizens. And so, when citizen associations get together, we're all volunteers. We have no budgets. We have nothing but volunteers' time and energy and the desire of residents to protect the neighborhoods that they moved into, and as the previous speaker-- And as the previous speaker suggests, some folks have lived there for a very, very long time. And so, I come only in solidarity to say, when the neighborhood associations come down here and ask you to uphold the policies that are duly adopted, to listen to them and to give them due respect.
Brett, did your neighborhood have a neighborhood meeting on this, or did you just get the flyer?
I'm actually here for another matter, but because I'm nearby.
Oh, okay.
And because I think it's important for neighborhoods to stand together with one another, I come in support of the Rancho Manor neighborhood.
We appreciate it very much that you did. Thank you, sir. Good evening, sir.
Hi. My name is John Hannan. I own a property at 1916 Fontana, which is next door to the property in question.
Oh.
And I oppose this community residence for two or three reasons. Number one, the 660-foot requirement, I think the city must have put that in, enacted that for a reason, a good reason, and I don't see why it should be a proposed area having 516 feet. It certainly doesn't comply with the 660 feet. And number two, there's already an existing community residence on Collins, which is about three blocks north of the property in question. And I was looking at the supporting documents for this proposal, and I found that 23 people opposed it and two people were in agreement with it. And I don't see how that equates to city staff's approval. Doesn't make any sense to me how they could approve something that 23 people are saying no and two people are saying yes.
Well, we're gonna sort that out for you.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming down. We appreciate it. Good evening, sir. How are you?
I'm fine.
Thanks.
Hope all of you the same. Dot on handy, 2004 West Mesquite Avenue, 89106. Where I live, I've lived since 1966. When I first moved to town, I took over Phillip Station on Rancho and Bonanza before they even built the seven-story atrium tower. It was all weeds back then.
Wow.
But anyway, I'm for this project and my main thing is the grace of God that I don't have to seek shelter like these people do. You know, I'm sure some of them might have been veterans or something. I don't know who's gonna be in there. But I'm for it, basically, even to the point that if she gets it going and everything, I would be happy to volunteer some of my time for some of these occupants to take them nearby, Smith's, the casino they was talking about and things like this. The Neighborhood Association does a good job. They've got the wall on Mesquite that's on the south, keep it painted nice and everything. But every now and then, you get somebody decides they wanna tag it.
I know.
Well, I don't think the people living in this house are gonna have paint on their thumbs.
I know.
I live right where Montrose comes out, on to Mesquite. So, everything back in that area coming north comes out there. And I don't have too much problems with it, but I do have some. And I just find this residence would be very quiet, just like the one that's on Collins. Nobody knew it was there. I've been living there all this time, never knew it was there until this came up, so.
We appreciate you coming down and taking the time.
Okay.
Appreciate it very much, sir. Thank you. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. My name is Jose Tenio, 2915 Alcoa Municipal Road, 89146. I own a group home. It's a 10-bed Alzheimer's facility. And I'm also the chairman of the Association of Group Homes in Southern Nevada. And I also was, as until recently, a member of the Assistant Living Advisory Council to the Bureau of Healthcare Quality and Compliance. I've gone through this before at the county, and I just couldn't understand why the neighbors didn't want to pass by request at that time. And I think up to this point, many people do not understand what we do. The license that she's applying for is called a Category 1, where the people can get out of a, in an emergency situation within four minutes. That's a requirement by the state and the marshal. Also, the state, the Bureau of Healthcare Quality, through the state, monitors us every single month. They're almost there every, I mean, every year. And every time there's a complaint, they'll be there. It's almost like the homeowners' association that we're under, under the state. A lot of the facilities that you will take a look at even look a lot better and are better kept than some of the houses in the neighborhood that we belong to, because we have to follow certain standards. So, a lot of times, the fears of the neighbors are very much unfounded because they don't understand what we do. Finally, you have to take a look at the macro of this thing. If you start limiting facilities like ours, what we do, by the way, hers is a Category 1, I'm a Category 2 Alzheimer's, mine is even worse as far as regulations are concerned. Her people, elderly, can still walk around if they want to, but basically they'll be staying around inside the houses. This one facility over here in the top, I talked to them today just to find out how many times an ambulance was called to their facility in the past year? Only three. Three times was an ambulance called. So, it's not like these people are gonna be dying or there could be a lot of emergency situations there. And finally, a lot of the fears, again, based even in my own neighborhood, is based because of the fact that they don't understand what we do. I said that before. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Good evening, Mr. Farlow.
It's Tom Farlow, 240 North 19th. Madam Chair, through you, I have a quick question for the staff.
Thank you.
In the conditions on this, is off-street parking required?
Allowed, you mean? Off-street parking?
Off-street parking is not required.
I think it should.
Community residents are considered single-family homes. There is a requirement for one additional parking space onsite beyond the two required normally as part of a single-family residence.
I'm guessing that there'd probably be three employees there with six people. So, I recommend off-street parking. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Farlow. Good evening, sir. State your name and address for the record. I'm sorry, what?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Jeremy Ramirez. I'm a local business owner in the medical field.
Your address, please.
I'm speaking about the.
No, but your address, where you live.
8264 Cupertino Heights, Las Vegas, Nevada.
Is that in this neighborhood?
Mountain's Edge.
Oh, Mountain's Edge, okay.
I'm a local business owner. I'm in the medical field.
Uh-huh.
And I have to abide by state law and federal law. Unfortunately, my in-laws are to the point where they need some assistance, and I'm actually enrolling them to this house in question. And I did do diligence with the state regulations with other facilities. And I choose this one because the fact that the caregivers that they're gonna provide is gonna be state-licensed and it has to go through a background and fingerprint, so there's no issue with anybody being paid under the table. And the integrity of the neighborhood is the reason why I chose this place, because I could go anywhere else in town and pay $3,000 a month for an 800-square-foot room with eight caregivers and there's 40 or 50 adult tenants in that facility. So, it's the integrity of the neighborhood and the process that this company is doing and the program that they have with the state is the reason why I'm choosing this place. So, and unfortunately, I can't take care of my in-laws and my wife can't either, but as a business owner, if someone's applying for a business and if it's not against the law for someone to start a business and it's creating jobs for people, then I'm all for it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Thanks for coming down. Good evening, ma'am. How are you?
I'm well. How are you?
Good.
My name is Jeanie Hassel. I live at 1908 Fontana, which puts me right next to this proposed business. And I do call it a business because someone is going to be making money, which pretty much is the standard of business, most of them, the successful ones. When I moved to Las Vegas, I loved this old neighborhood. I've only been here eight years now. It's a great neighborhood. It's a great neighborhood with families. There's kids that play in the street. But there's no, no local facilities for elderly, as we were all referred to during the neighborhood There isn't any park that elderly people can go and sit at, or there's no stores within walking distance for people who can make it out in four minutes from their bedroom to their front door, back door. There's really nothing for elderly people to do there. And it's a business. And this is a neighborhood. This is, you know, the neighbors wave and everybody says hi and you pet the dogs. It's just.
Right.
I think this is inappropriate. I think it's a shame that so many of us have had to spend as much time as we have spent trying to defend our homes.
Well, we appreciate it, because if you didn't spend the time, then we wouldn't know. So, thanks for coming down and we'll all take all of your voices in consideration.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak? Okay, we'll take one more and then we'll close the public comment and we'll open it up to the Planning Commission. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Festus Ivanka. I live in 35, 3551 Roskine Drive, North Las Vegas.
North Las Vegas?
Yeah.
Thank you.
I am a nurse practitioner.
Oh.
And I own a home health agency. My job is every day we visit elderly patients in their homes. And many of these neighborhoods in this town have this type of facilities that the neighbors don't even know. We take care of elderly patients, and I don't see any reason to discriminate wherever they live, because they're not harmful, they are not disturbing, they are not mentally ill, they just need help. And they provide a place for them to stay, for somebody to provide effective care for them. And I believe that they are safer in their home because it's highly regulated. And when we go see them in their homes and we have concerns, we call the state.
Right.
And I don't see any reason why they shouldn't live wherever they choose to put them to stay.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming out. We appreciate it. Danielle, do you wanna come back to the microphone now and then we'll? Is there anybody else that wishes to speak on this item? If not, we're gonna close the public comment. Is there anything you'd like to say back to these people, or do you just wanna close the public comment? Go from there.
Yeah, I'd like to make a few more points just before we close.
Okay. Sure, go ahead.
One gentleman had brought up that I have misled the signature for the petition.
Right.
On top, you can all see on your copies, on top of each signature page, it's just a brief summary of basically what every person read. And then I would go into more detail if they had questions on it. So, just a brief summary about the home, the waiver, the distance regulation, and that they support the waiver. Also, I wanted to just kind of elaborate a little bit. Except for the wheelchair and ramps that you would see, the house is not gonna be any different from any other residential facility.
Right.
It's the same, basically, as if you purchased a house and couldn't pay your mortgage and you rented out your rooms. Basically, the same thing. 375 postcards were sent out to the surrounding 1,000 radius of the home, and only this amount was a 22 or 25 petitions came back that were opposed to the facility opening.
Okay.
So, the only real reason we're all here today is because of the distance variance. If it was that we were 661 feet from the other facility, we all wouldn't be here today. So, I don't, they don't really come up with any other issues besides that distance of the other facility. Also, the other facility on Collins Avenue, 1913 Collins Avenue, they are a six-bed, Category 2 Alzheimer, dementia, and mental health facility. That's what they're endorsed for. We are just asking for endorsement for elderly Category 1, which does not include any Alzheimer's, any dementia, any mental ill, could be any one of us that live there.
Thank you.
I think that's pretty much it.
Okay.
Like I said, no commercial use. It's just gonna be a residential facility. It's not gonna be any different than anyone else living in their homes.
Okay. We're gonna close the public comment and we're gonna open it up to the Planning Commission. We'll start with my friend, Commissioner Schlossman.
Thank you. Madam Chair, through you, I lived next to one of these communities years ago, and, you know, it was, for the most part, it was okay, but there was a, it's transitional living where you have new people coming in once a month or once every couple of months. And I know this neighborhood very well, and I know a lot of people that live in this particular neighborhood. And there's a lot of pride amongst the homeowners and the tenants. I'm just not sure if this area, right in the center of the neighborhood, is appropriate for community residents. And I know that we're restricting it, or you're restricting it to a certain category, but I think from Title 19's perspective and from the city's perspective, we're just approving a community residence. And once we approve this community residence, if you go back to the state and change the category, then you could have whoever you want living in there without coming back to the city. Is, Madam Chair, through you, may I ask if our city planners, if that's a correct assessment?
Madam Chair, to respond to the question, the item that we have before this evening is a land use issue. And the question that we're asking is, is this appropriate land use in this particular area? What you have stated relative to Category 1, Category 2, that is regulated by the state over which the city has no jurisdiction.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, I'm not sure if I could support this, but thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Moody?
No questions or comments.
Commissioner Truesdale, sir?
You know, this, I've got two maps in front of me. One shows an area, the other one shows a large area, but as a matter of full disclosure, my daughter owns a home in a neighborhood south of here. But I've dealt with the, and I am gonna vote on this item, but.
You are?
Yeah.
So?
Thank you. If you look at the plan of this house, it, you know, it's four bedrooms. It's got a garage converted. Now, I don't believe the applicant would be here today if this just had three rooms and they couldn't maximize the occupancy here. One, the gentleman spoke about how nobody understands what group homes are, or nobody gives them a chance, and nobody does any of this. These neighbors have given a lot of, a lot of time and effort to understand this. This is their neighborhood. They're voting with their efforts to come down here in a group and speak in a group, and this is not, this takes a lot of time. This neighborhood, as Mr. Deegan said, is not prone to get off on every wild goose chase. They come down here on serious issues to protect their neighborhood and their quality of life. And it doesn't matter if it's 620 feet, five, we have a, we have a distance separation. That wasn't something that we came up with. It was something that was, I believe, given to us as a state outline some time ago, and we tweaked that, I believe. If that's true, Mr., no, it's not true. We picked a.
Well, let me, it was true at one time. There was a district court decision here in, here in Clark County that struck that law down, and that law no longer exists, the state law.
Commissioner, I think this was a collaboration between the group home people and the city. I think they came up with this provision.
Right.
I think wasn't there some year-long committee made up of group home owners as well as city people, and they came up with this particular distance separation.
And it's always a good, it's always a good distance unless you're the person wanting to waive it. And this is especially use permit. And I, I think it does have some potential risks beyond just what we do here. And I can't support this item. I think, I think the neighbors speak very well as one voice and a significant amount of voices are heard on this item. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Truesdale. Commissioner Flegus. Commissioner Bonner, sir?
I've got a couple of things I could say. One, it's news that the state does a monthly monitoring, and I didn't know that coming into this hearing, and yet I appreciate it because that removes some of the wonder what it's gonna turn into next kind of thinking. Another point is that the, there are a lot of uses like this that are treated as a commercial Another point is that the, there are a lot of uses like this that are treated as a commercial use for a purpose. It's for the health and safety reasons that they have to have the same kind of safety as if it were a commercial operation. Yes, it's still residents that are occupying it, but in some ways it's treated as a commercial operation, but it's far from a true retail use as we know it. Had an opportunity like this existed for my own mother, I would have preferred it from where she is now. There just wasn't this opportunity for my own mother. So, I'm kind of in between on where I'll go on this, but those are my thoughts for now.
Thank you. Commissioner Guanz, I would like to make a comment before you make your statement. My father lived in a home very similar to this on Valley View and Oakey in a residential neighborhood. The lots were bigger. They were half-acre lots and my, there was eight residents. And my dad had severe Alzheimer's. And the biggest issue was, and this is what I'm concerned about for you, Danielle, is the amount of trash. And when you put the trash out on the street, the trash is going to get picked up just like mine, Monday and Thursday, because we're in the same neighborhood. And I got to tell you something, if a wind came up or dogs got in it, it was an atrocity. Other than that, the place was perfect. I'm telling you, it was ran beautifully. It was clean. I have zero complaints. But I used to always say to myself, goodness, I just really am glad I don't live next door because those dogs got in the trash again. So, these are just things to think about for you when you do open your place. And these neighbors are much closer than my daddy was to the next house. It was a half acre away. So, I just wanted to put that on the record and I, and I, and I support your endeavor. I'm just not sure I support the location. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Commissioner. Mr. Deegan, I know he stepped out, but I just want to say hello to him. Him and I have battled, battled over the years. I'm glad to see he's still chipper and still is his same old self. But I think Mr. Ramirez, I think it's Jeremy Ramirez, kind of summarized what my thoughts were when Mr. Deegan said this is simply a way of warehousing people. And then Mr. Ramirez spoke about his option of whether to pay three thousand dollars a month and places in-law in an eight hundred square foot place with eight assistants. To me, that's warehousing. That's putting them in eight hundred square foot spaces, as many as you can get, as high of floors as you can, you can do. I, like Commissioner Quinn, I'm at, kind of at that point in my life. My dad's eighty-three years old. My mom's not far behind him. She still tells me I can't tell her age. But, and, and I certainly would want them to be in an environment like this. As a matter of fact, we've discussed it and I think I'd rather pay somebody three thousand dollars a month to stay in my parents' house and keep them rather than to take them and warehouse them in a facility. But I think this applicant has done her due diligence. I, I do believe she has. I think staff supports it. I think many of these residents are kind of looking at this as a facility rather than a residential community. But as spelled out in staff's report, when it talks about a community residence, it says it does not include the following, and I'll just read the list. It's not a senior citizen apartment. It's not adult daycare center. It's not a convalescent care facility. It's not a facility for transitional living of released offenders. It's not a facility to provide testing, treatment, or counseling for drug or alcohol abuse or hospice. And so, I think it will serve its intent to be a community residence, to give people a place where they can maybe, maybe come out and walk up and down the street and be a part of the community. I think I can support this. I think, number one, it provides jobs for folks. Number two, it actually takes some of these houses that we have in some of these community and, and it brings them back, and it brings the community back. And I think if we, as a society, my God, with all that's going on, there has to be some compassion for our own and there has to be some compassion for our elderly folks. And, you know, God bless ma'am for having this type of business to care for people. And I think it is a worthy cause and I think it will see my support.
Thank you, Commissioner Guanz. I think we're ready for a motion, sir.
With that being said, I will follow staff's recommendation for approval of item seventeen, a band SUP four-six-five-six-one, subject to all staff's recommendations and conditions.
Madam Chair, before we do that... Do we have the applicant come up and verbally say that she agrees with all the conditions?
Danielle? We just, we'd like you to just say that you will, you agree with all the conditions that staff has placed on your item as it goes for a vote for, with the motion being for approval.
Okay. Danielle Akayame agreed with whatever implications you guys...
Staff's recommendations, sir.
Staff's recommendations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
Chairman Quinn, I, looking at these conditions, I'd like to just add one, just for the, for the neighbors that are, that are, that were in opposition, I'd like to add a one-year review on this so that one year we can bring it back just for a review to see if there's any problems or issues that, that may arise.
Thank you, Commissioner. I think it's a good idea.
Madam Chair, just to clarify that condition, do you want that required review to be at a public hearing?
Um, no, I believe administrative would suffice. I know Mr. Deegan and the group there, if there are any issues, they will certainly let us know.
Thank you. So, the motion's on the floor for approval. Following all of staff's recommendations, please place your vote. As amended. And that motion passes this evening.
Madam Chair, that item goes forward to the December nineteenth city council meeting.
Thank you. Good luck to you. Moving on now to number eighteen, which is variance four-five-nine-five-three. The applicant owner is resident Nevada One LLC for possible action on a request for a variance to allow a one-point-zero connectivity ratio or one-point-three ratio as required generally at the northeast corner of Ann Road and Maverick Street, APN one-two-five-two-six-eight-zero-three-zero-zero-five, R-one, single-family residential zone. This falls in Councilman Ross's ward six. Number nineteen is the related item, which is WVR four-five-nine-five-four, for possible action on a request for a waiver to allow a reduced separation distance between external intersections from two-hundred-and-twenty feet to one-hundred-and-eighty-five feet. And then, that's also in Councilman Ross's ward. I mean, yes. And then number twenty is TMP for possible action on a request for a tentative map for an eleven-lot, single-family residential subdivision. Staff is recommending denial, I believe, on all three of these items. And we'd like to have the staff report now, please.
Madam Chair, staff finds that the requested variance and waiver to be self-imposed hardships and that a redesign of the project could accommodate and remove the necessity of a variance by adding a pedestrian path through the subdivision to create the connectivity required by Title Nineteen and that the intersection could be designed in such a way that it wouldn't require the waiver. Staff is recommending denial of all three applications as they are self-imposed hardships. Please note, we have received additional letters of protest and support since publication.
Thank you, Mr. Rankin. Good evening, applicant.
Good evening, commissioners. Madam Chair Pearson, Mark Bangen, LR Nelson, sixty-seven, sixty-five, West Russell Road, here representing the applicant. Yes, we are requesting the waiver and the variance. And the reason that we're requesting it is because originally this, this project was at the point where it was about to record a final map. They had gone out, they had actually rough graded the site, they had put utilities in. So, if we redesigned the site as per staff's recommendations to put the entrance off of Maverick, we would have to also relocate those utilities and that would be financially impossible for our client to do anything at that point. As far as the pedestrian connectivity, when this plan was originally designed, that was not part of the requirements for this type of development. So, that was something that came in afterwards. And I understand that, you know, we are asking for that waiver, but that is why. We're asking for the exact same eleven lots, the exact same configuration as what was approved before. We're just wanting to come through and do it now.
Thank you very much, sir. Is there anyone here that wishes to speak on this item? If so, come forward. If not, oh, thank you. Hi, Mr. Farlow.
Todd Farlow, two-forty Norman Street. I don't understand this. This was something that was already approved and it lapsed? Is that, is that, is that what happened?
Madam Chair, that is correct. This is an item that had been approved in the past. The entitlement lapsed and so the applicant is back before us.
I just wondered why he went all that work putting in the utilities when it wasn't approved.
I can answer that if you'd like, madam.
Oh, that's okay.
Okay.
Okay, is there anyone else that wishes to speak on this? If not, we'll close the public comment and we'll open it up to the planning commissioner. Commissioner Moody, sir?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I appreciate the connectivity requirements, but inasmuch as this was previously approved back in July of two thousand and six, and unfortunately, the application's expired. But it is back in front of us. I appreciate the financial concerns. I, I believe it is an appropriate land use and my motion will be to approve these three items.
Oh, good. Thanks, Mr. Moody. Is there anyone else wishes to speak on this item? Mr. Moody, we're ready for a motion.
Thank you. Regarding item eighteen, variance four-five-nine-five-three, move for approval following staff's conditions.
That motion's for approval. Please cast your votes. Sorry. Thank you. That motion passes.
Regarding item nineteen, waiver four-five-nine-five-four, move for approval following staff's conditions.
And that was for approval? And that motion also passes?
And finally, item twenty, TMP four-seven-zero-zero-five, move for approval following staff's conditions.
Thank you. And that motion was for approval? And that motion also passes? Thank you for coming down this evening, sir.
Thank you, Madam Chair Pearson.
Thank you very much.
Madam Chair, those items are final action in the absence of an appeal within ten days, with the exception of item twenty, which is in the absence of an appeal within seven days.
Thank you. Moving on now to number twenty-one is a variance four-six-nine-four-zero. The applicant owner is Nelka Mativa for possible action on a request for a variance to allow a zero-foot corner side yard setback where fifteen feet is required for an existing carport addition on zero-point-one-eight acres at eighteen-oh-nine South Valley View Boulevard. This falls in Councilman, Councilwoman Tarkanian's ward and staff is recommending denial. Ms. Mativa, are you here this evening? Thank you. Please come forward and state your name and address for the record.
Chairwoman Quinn?
Yes. Oh, staff report, sorry. Ready?
The carport is attached to the residence and located within the corner side yard setback area of the property. It is behind a screen wall with a garage door adjacent to the public right-of-way. Staff recommends a denial of the request as the applicant has created a self-imposed hardship by constructing the carport in the side yard setback area without first obtaining required building permits. If denied, the applicant will be required to modify or remove the existing construction in order to maintain a fifteen-foot corner side yard setback. Please note that there are additional letters of protest since publication.
Thank you, staff. Good evening, applicant. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Nelka Mativa and I live on eighteen-oh-nine South Valley View Boulevard.
Okay, so could you tell us a little bit about this, starting with the fact, you know, it's a little bit difficult when you don't have a building department, you know, you don't have a building license?
Yes.
And you built kind of like a fortress, you know, it's like a, you know, heavy-duty thing you built there. So, could you tell us how you got to this point without going to the building department first?
What happened was that I found this gentleman who told me that he can build what I asked for. And he has a construction business and he's going to do it for me on the weekend so he doesn't use his guys. It's going to be cheaper for me. So, I personally take responsibility for not asking. I had no idea I needed a permit for it. And I liked what he told me as far as amount.
So, was the wall built in conjunction with the carport? The carport in conjunction with the wall? So, it was all built at one time?
Yes.
Is that what you're saying?
Well, my walls were existing. That's how I bought the house, with the walls.
Yeah.
Basically, what you see here in the back, that's what he built. It's halfway covered. And I have a rolling-up gate.
Okay.
And the reason I wanted this, it's been something that I've been postponing for the last years. Two reasons. First, the traffic on Valley View is unbelievable. For the past eight months since the construction started, I haven't been able to use my garage up front because you can't, it's just you can't get in or get out. And the second reason is because that area where the carport is right now, because of the walls, it was such a good hideout for people, for people who were not supposed to be there. I found so many things that, I have two kids and I'm just afraid that sometimes they might find it before me. And I'm talking about needles.
Right.
I'm talking about traps.
I understand. I just want to, I want to make sure that people understand it's, if everybody didn't get a building license or went to the building department, everybody you see here wouldn't have a job.
I understand.
So, we have, we have to get building licenses.
I know I do.
We have to do, we have to put the cart in front of the horse because, you know, it's just the way it works. And, you know, we wouldn't be sitting here today if you'd have done it the proper way. You understand that, right?
I do. I do understand. And that's why I'm here and that's why I want to do everything right now because...
Is there anybody here that wishes to speak on this item? If so, please come forward and talk about it. And if not, we'll close the public hearing. Thank you. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. I'm Michael Chambers, thirty-twenty Mason Avenue, eight-nine-one-oh-two. And I want to speak for this project. I own a corner lot home. And I can appreciate what this person's going through. The setback is a requirement. I think we all understand that. I think the average person doesn't understand this process. I saw the project in completion. It looks fine. And it's a, it's a, it's a quality product. So, to make her tear it down and create an eyesore doesn't seem to make much sense. So, hopefully, staff, the commissioners can figure out some kind of compromise so this project can stay, especially on Valley View, which is such a heavy street.
Right.
So, I, I find it a better solution than having the driveway on Valley View myself.
Mr. Chambers, we appreciate you coming down and taking the time.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Farlow?
Yes, thank you, Todd Farlow. I concur with Mr. Chambers. I think it looks, it looks nice if it doesn't fall on somebody's head. I think you're all right.
Thank you, Mr. Farlow. We'll now close the public hearing and open it up to the planning commission. If there's anyone here, starting with Mr. Flank, Commissioner Flengus?
The, I'm very familiar with the area and I can sympathize with the applicant with Valley View traffic. I mean, it's, you know, if the road's not under construction, even if it's not under construction, there's just a tremendous amount of traffic on there. And she's on a corner lot, which makes it even more difficult. I somewhat sympathize with her of having somebody come in and build it for her without telling her you need a permit. You know, usually when you hire somebody, it's that's person's responsibility. She was probably remiss in not checking to see if he was a licensed contractor or whatever. In any event, I think the project's fine. I don't want to send the message that folks can come out here and do this and then come back here and get forgiveness instead of permission. But the bottom line on this one, I think the applicant was an innocent party in this and I would support approval of this as it is.
Thank you, Commissioner Flengus. Commissioner Truesdale, Commissioner Moody? Thank you, Commissioner Flengus, Commissioner Truesdale, Commissioner Moody, Commissioner Schlotman, Commissioner Bonner, sir.
Yeah, my, my question would be, Commissioner Flengus, do you find a way to get her to get it permitted properly in order to make it legal even after the fact? I have been involved with the same situation, quite frankly, and the result was they had to go through the paperwork and the drawings and the approval process to make it legal. And actually, that's what I would recommend and have it become legal.
I agree.
Thank you, Commissioner Bonner, Commissioner Goines. Okay, we're gonna look for a motion then, please, 'cause I can't make it, so. Love a motion, Commissioner Flengus.
Madam Chairman, for item number twenty-one, V A R four six nine four zero, I would move that we approve it. And just for the record, there is a condition, condition number two, which states all necessary building permits shall be obtained and final inspections shall be completed in compliance with Title Nineteen and all codes as required by the Department of Building and Safety.
Thank you.
I may wanna suggest we maybe put a timeline on that, 'cause that could, that's pretty open-ended as to when she should actually get that done.
What do you recommend, sir?
I don't know, thirty, sixty days? I don't know how long the process takes.
Thank you.
Maybe the director would know.
Madam Chairman, I would accept the city attorney's recommendation of a time limit also put to my motion in the amount of sixty days.
So, that's in sixty days. Ms. Makita, do you understand then that, so you got it approved, we're gonna vote? We're gonna, come back down here, honey. So, we're gonna vote? And then if it passes, then you've gotta get your paperwork cleaned up in the next sixty days.
Thank you, I do have everything ready, I'm just waiting for you.
I know, thank you so much.
Thank you.
So, Commissioner Flengus, the motion was for approval, please cast your votes, following staff's recommendations and yours. And that motion passes, so the next sixty days, ho, ho, ho. Go, go, go.
Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Excuse me, Madam Chair, this item is going forward to City Council on December the nineteenth.
You might wanna have them all paid up by then, when you go.
Well, actually, she, she won't be able to do anything until that final approval by City Council.
Oh, I'm sorry, you'll have to do it after the City Council approves your item. So, you can't go pay anything till after the nineteenth? Okay, thank you. Okay. Moving on now to number twenty-two, variance four seven zero one five, the applicant owner is Lynn Margie, amended nineteen eighty-nine trust, for possible action on a request for a variance to allow the addition of two proposed accessory structures, class two, with three thousand five square feet of combined floor area, to a site containing three existing accessory structures with sixteen hundred and twenty-six square feet of combined floor area, where maximum combined floor area is one thousand two hundred and seventy-five square feet for all accessory, accessory structures as allowed at sixty-five hundred Bull Ring Lane. This application falls in Ward Six, Councilman Ross's ward. Staff is recommending denial, may we please have the staff report?
Chairwoman Quinn, the proposed accessory structures include a storage shed and a greenhouse and will further increase the total floor area of accessory structures on a lot that already exceeds what is permitted by the, by current Title Nineteen standards. The total lot coverage for all existing proposed structures on the site will equal approximately eight percent of the lot area. Adding the proposed accessory structures to a site that already exceeds the allowed floor area for accessory structures would be a self-imposed hardship, therefore, staff recommends denial. Please note that there are additional letters of support since publication.
Thank you, Mr. Gebkeke. Good evening, applicant, please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Darrell Wood, thirty-five Rayburn Drive in Henderson, Nevada, representing the applicant. And basically, I would ask respectfully that you approve this variance. My understanding is that there were no letters of protest. You can see on the site that of the five pieces of property that touch my client's property, only one of them is built on. And it's also my understanding that there's a bill that's been proposed that will be heard by City Council next month that actually negates the requirement for the maximum coverage being fifty percent of the residence and will change, the language currently changes to fifty percent of the rear yard, which would make this entire application not necessary if that were to pass.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. Is there anyone that wishes to speak on this item? If so, please come forward. Hi, Mr. Farlow.
Thank you, Todd Farlow, two forty North nineteen Street. I think it should be approved because, number one, it's on over two acres, my gosh, I mean, the, that's a huge, a huge lot. And there was a picture of the house there, there. That house is absolutely beautiful.
Thank you, Mr. Farlow. Is there anyone else? If not, we'll close the public hearing and we'll open it up to the Planning Commission. Commissioner Moody, sir, do you wanna start?
Thank you, Madam Chair, through you. I have a history of voting against accessory structures in this ward, but I find some differences here in those that I usually don't like. So, there are some things going in your client's favor. Number one, as pointed out by Mr. Farlow, it is on a two-acre piece of property. Your client's done a great job, has kept this property looking really good. I love the fact that the proposal would match the stucco on the existing structure, the single-family residence, and you're gonna see my sport on this.
Thank you. Does anyone else on the commission wish to speak? If not, we'll have a motion from Commissioner Moody, sir.
Thank you. With regard to item twenty-two, V A R four seven zero one five, move for approval following all of staff's conditions.
Thank you, that motion is for approval, please cast your vote. And that motion passes.
Madam Chair, that item is final action in the absence of an appeal within ten days.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're moving on now to item number twenty-three, which is S U P four six six nine six. The applicant is Jamie Schaub, owner, Pines Office Center LLC, for possible action on a request for a special use permit for a six hundred and ninety-square-foot massage establishment with a waiver to allow a thirty-five-foot distance separation from a residentially-zoned property where four hundred feet is required at seventy-three thirty-one West Charleston Boulevard, number one thirty. This is in Councilwoman Tarkanian's Ward One. Staff is recommending denial. Staff, may we have your...
Chairwoman Quinn, the proposed use will occupy tenant space within an office complex and does not meet the minimum distance separation requirements from residential property for a massage establishment use. As a result, the proposed use is not appropriate for the site and cannot be conducted in a manner that is harmonious and compatible with the surrounding uses, therefore, staff recommends denial. Please note that there are additional letters of protest since publication.
Thank you. Good evening, Ms. Stewart.
Good evening, Lucy Stewart, thirty-nine hundred Meadows Lane, and with me is Ms. Jamie Schaub, who is the tenant for this property. And with all due respect to staff, I do disagree with them that this is not an appropriate location. It's zone C one, that massage therapist, massage therapist is a use that's appropriate in C one with a use permit. The reason we have to ask for the separation waiver is because the way it's measured is property line to property line and because even though the building she's in is like very close to Charleston, it's the second building south of there, and there's two more buildings between her and the residential, there's a wall, there's parking. I mean, I don't even know that anybody in the residential area would even know she's in there, except for just being notified of it. I think it's a, it's a garden office, it's very pastoral, it kind of has the setting I think that's appropriate for a massage therapist. She's a sole proprietor, she'll be the only person operating there, so her hours will be even much smaller than what's required by code, plus it's by appointment only. She does therapeutic massage and so we ask for your approval. You wanted to say anything?
Please state your name and address for the record.
Jamie Schaub, seventy-three thirty-one West Charleston, eight nine one one seven.
What type of massage do you do, Ms. Schaub?
I actually am certified in a variety of different styles, Swedish massage, therapeutic deep tissue. I've been certified with different types of myofascial release work with John Barnes, also with James Wolowski, it's very orthopedic, sports massage-related. He actually had training in Miami with working on professional athletic teams for a number of years and then decided he wanted to come out and be an educator. So, training with him through that, countless, hundreds and hundreds of hours of continuing education on top of what is required to keep my, my licenses and to keep my certifications.
And you'll be working there by yourself?
And I am...
There won't, there won't be other people working, just you alone?
Completely individually owned and operated, just me, myself and I.
And I.
But I need to have this permit for, to go further with my license for the establishment 'cause even though it is myself and I don't wanna rent a room from another establishment, I have to go through this whole process.
Thank you.
And I'm not an ancillary, so.
Thank you for coming, for speaking.
Thank you.
Is there anyone here that wishes to speak on this item? If so, please come forward. If not, we will close the public comment and open it up to the Planning Commission. I just wanna say for the record that I met Ms. Stewart at the property last week and, and I think what's happening to people like your client is that the rent is so high in populated areas and in bigger areas that this is a very quiet space. It's, I always look for those shady places that we have up and down Sahara that are inappropriate. This is not that sort. This is a very quiet place. It's a place that, it doesn't sound like it meets the area that it should be going into, but circumstances each are different and this is one that I feel does meet the, the area that it's been chosen for. So, thanks for meeting me out there, Lucy, I appreciate it, 'cause had I not gone, I would not have known, so. Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak on this item?
Madam Chairman, seeing no further discussion on this, for item number...
Review.
Beg your pardon?
I'd like to do a review.
On item number twenty-three, S U P four six six nine six, I move to approve with an additional condition of a one-year administrative review.
Thank you, so you'll agree with the one-year administrative review?
Absolutely.
Thank you. And that motion passes.
Madam Chair, that item goes forward to City Council on December the nineteenth.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Moving on to S U P four six eight four three, the applicant is Walgreen Company. The owner is shared in LLC for possible action on a request for a special use permit for a proposed retail establishment with accessory package liquor off-sale use with an existing fourteen thousand four hundred and ninety square foot general retail store other than listed at sixty-eight twenty-five North Durango Drive. This item falls in Councilman Ross's ward, Ward Six. May we please have the staff report? And staff is recommending approval on this item.
Madam Chair, staff finds the use to be compatible and harmonious with the surrounding land uses and recommends approval. Please note, we've received additional letters of support and protest since publication.
Thank you. Applicant, good evening.
Good evening, Jennifer Roberts of Lionel Sawyer &amp; Collins, three hundred South Fourth Street, representing the applicant Walgreens. This is an application to add accessory package liquor, beer and wine to its existing store at sixty-eight twenty-five North Durango on the corner of Durango and Deer Springs. The parcel is surrounded by vacant land and there, it is adjacent to some commercial use as well as across the street from a large commercial center. The amount of alcohol product consists of less than one percent of the overall space that will be placed at the store and it's just a supplement to the existing household and grocery items sold at their typical Walgreens. Other Walgreens have been approved for the addition of alcohol sales. Staff has recommended approval, there are no waivers requested here, and so we would ask that you follow staff's recommendation.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone that wishes to speak on this item? If so, please come forward. If not, we'll close the public hearing and we'll open it up to the, the Planning Commissioners.
Madam Chairman, I just need to make a brief disclosure. With regards to this property and the Walgreens that's there, I was involved in this previous litigation on this property, that has been adjudicated, I guess is a good answer. I have no financial interest with Walgreens or any of the remaining property owners here and with that information, I will, will vote on this item.
Thank you, Commissioner Truesdale. Commissioners, Moody, sir?
Madam Chair, I don't suspect any further discussion on this, so I'm prepared to make a motion.
Thank you very much.
Move for approval following staff's recommendations, subject to all conditions.
Thank you, that motion is for approval, please cast your votes. And that motion passes. Thank you very much. Have a nice evening.
Thanks.
Madam Chair, that item is final action in the absence of an appeal within ten days.
Thank you. Moving on to S U P four six nine six two, the applicant is Puff and Smoke, Smoke Shop LLC, the owner is Bayna's LLC, for possible action on a request for a special use permit for a gaming establishment, general business-related use with an existing, within an existing general retail store at eighteen oh one East Charleston Boulevard. This falls in Councilman Coffins' ward. Staff is recommending approval, may we please have the staff report?
Madam Chair, staff finds that the use proposed is compatible and harmonious with the surrounding land uses and the current use and recommends approval.
Thank you, Mr. Rankin. Good evening, sir, ma'am, Lucy.
Good evening, Lucy Stewart, thirty-nine hundred Meadows Lane, and with me is Mr. and Mrs. Fries, who are the operators, owner-operators of the building. And actually, he's up here, oops, sorry, he's up here in the support, he'll speak in a minute. But we are in, in support of staff's recommendations. This operates, it's a smoke shop, but it kind of functions as a convenience store. They, it's not that they don't wanna sell beer and wine, it's just that there's two churches located within it, so they can't. And as a result, without having the beer and wine, they have to call themselves a gaming establishment. They just wanna have, you know, like a few machines when you walk in just to supplement the income that they have.
Thank you, Ms. Stewart. Sir?
Good evening, my name is Reza Salimian, I'm the owner of property. And I know this, these people are wonderful people, I have them for almost four years. And my address, I've been in Charleston since nineteen seventy-eight, I have a business and I'm still around. And I've got a few properties and...
Thank you.
And I'm so lucky to have them as a tenant.
Thank you, sir.
They're very good people. I got a couple of recommendations later if you need it.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak on this item? If so, please come forward, state your name and address.
Thank you, Todd Farlow, two forty North nineteenth Street, and this is my stomping ground and I oppose this.
You do?
We've got enough, we've got Adatsis across the street from that, we've got gaming over there at Albertson's, enough is enough. We got, first of all, there's another smoke shop right, right next door to this, I mean, too much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Farlow. Does anyone else wish to speak? If not, we'll close the public hearing and we'll open it up to the Planning Commissioner, Commissioner Schlotman, did you have something to say, sir?
Yes, Madam Chair, I have a brief disclosure that I live within the notification area, however, I'm not affected any greater or lesser than any other resident, so I will be voting on this matter. And, you know, I really don't have that big of an issue with the gaming machines, just about every place has gaming machines around that area. But the, but the temporary sign, if you can address that. And also, if you look at the windows, I pass by this every day and it exceeds, I think, twenty, twenty-five percent of the loud window coverage, and I forget what the exact code is on that. But if we could also get the windows cleaned up and not have so much signage all over that building?
Yes.
Madam Chair, one more question. So, it's a maximum of twenty percent of the windows or, and there is no calculations on this building as far as the windows go and signage? Can we just add a condition stating that the...
Madam Chair, through you, if I might, there is already a condition in place for this special use permit, which does require the signage to be in compliance with our sign code. They would have ten days to get the signage into compliance with the sign code if this item were to be approved, and that's condition number three for the special use permit.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anyone else wish to speak on this item? Commissioner Schlotman?
Yes, Madam Chair, through you. I would like to make a motion to follow staff's recommendation for approval of SUP 46962.
I'm sorry, Madam Chair, did they orally agree to those conditions?
We agree.
Thank you.
They agree to staff's recommendations, and you agree about the windows?
Yes, we'll work with staff and clean them up.
Okay, thank you. So...
That is my motion.
For approval?
For approval.
Following, okay. Thank you. Thank you. And that motion was for approval, and it was passed. Thank you and good night, Ms. Stewart.
Thank you very much.
Earlier in the evening, we trailed item number 16, SUP 46294. The applicant, 501 Fremont, owner Fremont, Las Vegas. Are you here yet this evening, sir? Yes, okay. Could, would you like to come down now?
Madam Chair, if I could also add, on item number 25, that item is going forward to City Council on December the 19th.
Excuse me one second, I need to ask the city attorney something. Should we have them come now or just at the end? Do you want to just know that they're... Okay, go ahead. Thank you. Could you come forward? I'm going to reread it. It was item number 16, is that correct? Item number 16 was SUP 46294. The applicant is 501 Fremont LLC, owner is Fremont, Las Vegas Boulevard for possible action on a request for a special use permit for a proposed 15,317 square foot tavern, limited establishment at 107 South Las Vegas Boulevard. This falls in Councilman Barlow's Ward, Ward 5. Staff is recommending approval. May we please have the staff report?
Madam Chair, staff finds the use to be compatible and harmonious with the surrounding land uses and recommends approval.
Thank you. Good evening, applicant.
Madam Chair, I'm just going to go ahead and restate my abstention that I've recently executed a contract with the property owners of this property on a different project, so therefore I will be abstaining on this matter.
Thank you, Commissioner Schlotman. Good evening, sir. Please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Michael Cornthwaite, 111 Las Vegas Boulevard South. I'm here representing the owner, and I request that you approve this in accordance with the staff recommendations.
Following all staff's recommendations. Thank you. Is there anyone here that, we already have the staff report, right? Okay, is there anyone here that wishes to speak on this item? If so, come forward. If not, we'll close the public hearing and open it up to the commissioners. Commissioner Goines.
Madam Chairman, I find everything to be proper and in order on item 16. If there's no further questions, I'll proper up a motion.
Thank you. That motion is for...
My motion will be for approval of item 16, abeyance SUP 46294, subject to all staff's recommendations and conditions.
And Madam Chair, given that the applicant is in agreement with all the conditions?
We do agree with the conditions.
Thank you. So, the motion is made for approval, showing Commissioner Schlotman has, is not going to vote, and a yes vote is for approval.
Long overdue on that corner.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And that motion passes. We're moving on now to...
Madam Chair, that item will go forward to City Council on December the 19th.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to number 26, SUP applicant, SUP 47009. The applicant owner is the Investment Solutions for Possible Action on a Request for a Special Use Permit for a Proposed 12,000 Square Foot Commercial Recreation Amusement Indoor Use with a waiver to allow the use to occupy 100% of the total floor area where a maximum of 35% is allowed at the southeast corner of Redcoach Avenue and Balsam Street. This falls in Councilman Anthony's Ward, Ward 4. Staff is recommending denial. It has a related item with it. Item number 27 is SDR 47010 for possible action on a request for a site development plan review for a proposed 12,000 square foot commercial recreation amusement indoor facility. Staff also recommends denial, and may we please have the staff report?
Chairwoman Quinn, the commercial recreation amusement indoor facility is proposed for the purpose of coaching pitching and batting for baseball and softball to the public. The facility will feature eight batting cages and a potential bullpen for pitching practice inside a steel-paneled building with an open floor plan. Due to aesthetic concerns regarding the proposed steel shell building, the requested waiver will allow more than 35% of the total floor area to be dedicated to the use, and the requested exception of required parking lot landscape requirements, staff recommends denial of this proposal. Please note that there are additional letters of protest since publication.
Thank you. Good evening, applicant.
At Dirk Nelson, 5855 Janelle Drive. I am representing the owners, Tom Wheeler and Dave Johnson, and also Curtis Laveri. We are, actually Curtis is the guy that's going to be running the batting academy. It's Kaboom Batting Academy for girls, and I'd like to turn a little time over to Curtis to explain kind of what he's planning on doing.
Thank you. Good evening, Curtis.
Good evening. Curtis Laveri, 5608 Great Gorge Court, Las Vegas, Nevada, 89149. Basically, what we're trying to do is trying to open up a facility for, an academy for softball players. Baseball to be included, but generally focusing on the area of softball for young ladies. I am a softball coach at Centennial High School. I have been for, this is my 10th year. I'm very familiar with the area, born and raised here in Las Vegas, Nevada. And what we're trying to do is something completely different than everything that's been done thus far, other than Las Vegas Baseball Academy, which is the only place that's actually survived out here and provided a good facility for kids to further, not only further their playing careers, but further their education. And so, we're building an academy for kids to come to, to be able to work on their skills, but also to have a place, a safe haven for them to go to after school and be able to, there'll also be an area in there for them to work on their homework and further their education. And that's pretty much it to this point.
Thank you. Is there anyone here that wishes to speak on this item? If so, please come forward. If not, we will close the public hearing and open it up to the planning commission. Commissioner Flengas, sir?
Thank you. I like the project and the concept of the project. I think it's great. I think the location's good. But the one issue I have is you've got a church to the east of you, and it's my understanding that Dave said it's okay for your project. Is that correct?
Yeah, we actually purchased the property from the church about eight years ago.
But my one issue that I have is the look of the thing. You've got a residential area. You have a church to the east of you, which is a very nice-looking building. And I'm really concerned about having an industrial-looking use on that. And so, the question becomes, what can you do to make that more palatable, to look more like a commercial or to fit in with the surrounding neighborhood?
Well, we did bring a rendering that we wanted to paint kind of around the building, but the owners prior to me coming, and we knew this was one of the conditions, was the aesthetics of the building. Because we are not opposed to doing whatever it takes to, you know, make the building more attractive, and so it doesn't look like a, so it doesn't look like a barn. And we don't want it to look like a barn. And this is a mural that we want to kind of put along the whole west side of the building. And it's just kind of a rough drawing. It's kind of hard to see the mountains in the background and that, but we was going to extend the mural around three sides of it, and then on the front of it, we'll have the KBA Kaboom Batting Academy. And we've talked to the designer, and we're willing to do whatever we have to to make it look so it's not a square-looking barn.
The, I want to definitely support this, but again, I'm still a little bit worried about the look. How would you feel about a 30-day abeyance, and you work with staff to see what you can do, you know, that's within reason to make it look more compatible with the area?
Yep, we're okay with that.
Certainly. Is there any further discussion by anybody? If not, Madam Chairman, I'd move to obey this to the next meeting.
Thank you, Commissioner Flengas. So, the motion is to obey for the next meeting.
Thank you.
And so, what we want to see is what it's going to really look like.
Right.
You know what I mean? Okay, thank you.
Through you, Madam Chair.
Yes.
Sometimes colors and stuff can do that, too, to soften it. So, when you go back and talk with your architect, just blend it in with the neighborhood.
That meeting, sir, will be the second Tuesday of December. Am I correct? December 11th.
Okay.
Right here.
And Madam Chairman, for purposes of clarity, that's both items number 26 and item number 27.
So, both, thank you. And that motion passes, to hold it. Moving on now to item number 28, SUP 47012. The applicant, HCBI Centennial Hills LLC, owner, HCBI Centennial Hills LLC et al., for possible action on a special use permit for a congregate care facility at 6630, 6640, 6660, 6670, and 6680 Grand Montecito Parkway. This falls in Councilman Ross's Ward. Staff is recommending approval. It has a related item with it, which is number 29, SDR 47014, for possible action on a major amendment of an approved site development plan, SDR 3271, for a proposed single-story 68,063 square foot congregative care facility in three buildings with a waiver of Town Center development standards to allow none of the westernmost building to be built to the front setback line where a minimum of 60% is required. Staff also recommends approval on this item. May we please have the staff report?
Chairwoman Quinn, the proposed congregate care facility campus is comprised of three single-story buildings and is to be located adjacent to an existing medical office building. The site was previously approved for an office and retail development with perimeter landscape plan areas already completed per that approval. The buildings which would replace those approved for the office and retail development would be placed on the vacant pads within the site. The requested waiver, as minor in nature, will replace a similar, less intense waiver that was approved for the office and retail development. Staff supports the waiver request and recommends approval of both the special use permit and site development plan review, as the use and design are in substantial conformance with Town Center and Montecito development standards. If denied, the site will remain as previously entitled. Please note that there are additional letters of protest since publication.
Thank you, Mr. Gepke. Good evening, applicant.
Hello, Kevin Thistle, 7383 Atticoma Avenue, Las Vegas, Nevada. I'm the architect here representing the owner.
Good evening, Mr. Thistle.
Hello.
Is there anything else you have to say about it?
Yes, I have several things to say, actually, just basically to make you...
I mean, you'll follow all staff's recommendations?
Oh, yeah, we can hear staff's recommendations, yes.
Okay, is there anyone here in the public that wishes to speak on this item? If not, oh, here we go. Hi, Mr. Farlow.
Thank you, Todd Farlow. I think you ought to show the elevations, because they're beautiful.
Oh, thank you. Could you show us the elevations, because they look so nice? That really does look nice.
We have three buildings, and that's the first one. This is the skilled nursing facility. And we are matching the existing medical office building that is there with regards to architectural design, colors, and materials. I'll show you the other two buildings as well.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak? If not, we'll close the public hearing, and we're going to open it up to the planning Commissioner Moody, sir?
I just want to thank the applicant for the neighborhood meeting, which I attended. No one showed up to protest this, although we have received three postcards since. But I'm in support of this project. It's, it'll be a nice addition to this area, and I will, I'll move for approval at the appropriate time.
Thank you. Do any of the other commissioners wish to speak on this item? Commissioner Goines?
I think it's a beautiful, beautiful building, and I can support it. But just in contrast to the other item I had, to me, this is warehousing. That's all I wanted to say.
Can I comment on that?
Yes.
This facility, actually, the operators of this have other facilities. The local, one of the partners on this owns the Willow Creek Facilities, and they have, they provide care for both, for assisted living and for memory care type of patients that need help. The facilities that they build are more like a upper-end custom home with a home kind of feel, and if you were to visit one of those facilities, they're very nice, they are very, kept up very well, and they give high-quality care.
Thank you, Kevin. Thank you very much. Mr. Bonar, sir, do you wish to say anything? Thank you. Commissioner Moody, we're ready for a motion.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Item 28, SUP 47012, move to follow staff's recommendation for approval, subject to conditions.
Thank you. That motion is for approval, following all of staff's recommendations. And that motion passes.
Thank you very much.
We have one more.
Item 29, SDR 47014, also move to follow staff's recommendation for approval, subject to conditions.
Thank you. That motion's for approval, and that motion also passes. Thank you.
Madam Chair, those items are final action in the absence of an appeal within 10 days.
Thank you. We're moving on now to item number 30, which is SDR 46577. Applicant owner Vista Medical Associates Incorporated for possible action on a request for a site development plan review for proposed 520 square foot addition to an existing 2,882 square foot medical office facility with a waiver to allow no landscape buffer where along the west property line, and a portion of the east property line where an eight-foot wide landscape buffer is required. This is at 2909 West Charleston Boulevard. This falls in Councilwoman Tarkanian's Ward, and staff is recommending denial. Good evening, applicant. Please state your name and address for the record.
Chairwoman Quinn?
Yeah, Oscar O'Keefe, 10,001 Peace Way, 89147.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mrs. Staff reported.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Hold on. I'm sorry, staff, excuse me.
Chairwoman Quinn, the proposed building addition will expand the existing medical office and parking lot areas. Waivers and an exception are required to reduce site landscaping below the minimum Title 19 standards. Staff does not support these requests, as there is adequate space in the site for additional landscaping to mitigate the waiver request and to eliminate the exception request. Therefore, staff recommends denial of the site development plan review, as the proposal is not harmonious and compatible with the surrounding area. If approved, condition of approval number three should be amended as follows. All development shall be in conformance with the site and landscape plan date stamped 10/23/12, and the building elevations date stamped 8/23/12, except as amended by conditions herein. Please note that there are additional letters of protest since publication.
Thank you, Mr. Gepke. I'm sorry, I forgot you. Applicant?
Before you go, Madam Chair, I'm going to abstain on this item in as much as my firm manages the adjacent property, the Crowlax Center, so...
That looks really nice. Thank you, Mr. Trusdell. Good evening, applicant. Let's start over. Name and address for the record, because I missed it.
Oscar O'Keefe, 10,001 Peace Way, 89147, representing the client, Vista Medical.
And you're the architect, sir?
Yes, ma'am.
As the owner here?
No, ma'am.
Okay.
And as you can see by my site plan here, the existing driveway will not allow for any landscaping at this location, because of the access driveway is only 16 feet wide. If I need eight feet, I'm left with an eight-foot driveway. So, I cannot put any landscaping at that location. So, that would take care of the east side. As far as the remainder, I can meet the landscaping there. As far as the west side, I have existing parking spaces right up against the property line. If I move them towards the east side... line. If I move them towards the, the east side, they'll be in the way of the driveway. So, I cannot meet the parking, the landscaping requirement at that location. As far as this location over here, I could add, slide my parking spaces towards the east side and provide some landscaping at that location. But once I hit this building location, of the existing building in the rear, I won't be able to meet the eight feet. I can maybe meet five feet at some locations, but, but I could meet eight feet at most of that location on the west side. But as far as the east side, there's no way I can make, make that landscape requirement.
Okay. So, that's, you're here just to talk about the landscaping. That's your-
Yes, ma'am.
And then, the little 524 feet, how big is the addition? 520 square-foot addition?
To the rear building.
What are you going to, what are they going to use that for?
He's talking about putting a G P there, back there.
What's a G P?
General practitioner.
Another doctor?
Another doctor, yes.
Seriously?
Right.
Okay. Thank you. Is that all you have to say?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. We're going to open up now for public comment. We have two microphones, and here's the deal. We want to hear what everybody has to say. Please don't be repetitive. Say something different, and be kind to each other, and not disrespectful, because this man is just the messenger. Okay? He's the architect. Okay?
(laughing) Okay, we won't shoot him, then.
Don't shoot him.
But it's time for the bulldozer on this one. This is the most convoluted thing I've ever seen. How in the world are all these cars going to be backing up and pulling out and trying to get to that, that drive? This is just, this is absurd.
Thanks, Mr. Farlow. Name and address for the record. Oh, you changed.
Hello again. Yes, I took off my jacket. I'm Brett Birdsong. I live at 3012 Mason Avenue, 89102, in the McNeil neighborhood, which is just to the back of this property. Or my, my property's not just to the back, but I live in the neighborhood that backs up to the property. I am the president of the McNeil Neighborhood Association, which is a voluntary, city-chartered group of residents, neighbors, that get together to try to protect the interests of our neighborhood. And we've had quite a few items tonight, just sort of in the inner core in these nice neighborhoods. And I will start off by just saying that I have quite a few neighbors here whose perseverance ought to at least be recognized. And so, may I ask the folks from McNeil to just stand up?
I'll give them a hand for hanging in there.
We, we are a tight group of neighbors. There are about 600 homes in our neighborhood, which basically runs from, to the west of Rancho up to Cashman. And we have been very concerned over the years with the nature of the development and the businesses along the Charleston corridor. And I am quite pleased that, that Director Fagstaff did a nice job on their staff report recommending denial of this. But we have real problems with the, with this particular property, which is simply an eyesore. It looks terrible. We don't want intensification of commercial use. We have already encroachment in our neighborhood in terms of a lack of parking facilities in a number of properties along Charleston. People are parking in our neighborhood. We see increased foot traffic through our neighborhood. This particular property, if you drive by it at just about any time during the business, has between a handful and dozens of people hanging out in their cars, eating lunch. I don't know what they're doing, but it is not, it is not really compatible with, with the concerns of our residential neighborhood. We've been through tough times in the inner-city core, too. We've seen upticks in crime. We've seen general problems. And I would note, if you look at the back of this, well, you can't see it on this item right here, but this property backs up to some of the finest large-lot homes along Ashby Avenue. Those are really terrific, terrific properties. They are an asset for the city. And we aren't against commercial development along that Charleston strip, but this city is invested in beautifying Charleston. It's investing in beautifying Valley View, and we want to make sure that the city plans that require things like landscape buffers, like adequate parking, and, and the sort, are assiduously complied with along these properties. This is a really a gem area, and, and it's not too far from, from the edge, and we don't want to be any closer to the edge. And so, we would ask, we would ask for, for you all to uphold the fine work of the city planning staff and vote for denial.
Thank you, Brett. Thanks for coming down.
Now, I would like to submit for the record a list of residents, most of whom are here tonight. There, there are 20, 22 lines, but more people than that sign here who are opposed to this.
We'll give that to the clerk, and that will go on the record for city council.
Thank you.
Thank you for sticking around, Brett. I appreciate it. Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening. Jennifer Rochelle, 2601 Gilmary Avenue. I also live in McNeil. I appreciate the applicant's desire to add other buffer areas of landscaping in, non-compliance, but trying to buffer it more. However, this is a neighborhood, the improved corridor status, and the things that are trying to be followed by the Planning Commission is appreciated. If this does get approved, it sort of opens the door to the facility next door that had a song and dance trying to, I don't know, Snake Charm or McNeil Estates to approve their facility, just by mentioning that they were part of John Hopkins. So, I appreciate my fellow residents and Brett, and all I can think of is, I know that he abstained, but Commissioner Truesdale earlier said, trying to preserve the city gems, and this is definitely a gem. Please preserve. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Does anybody else wish to speak on this item? You certainly are more than welcome to come down and voice your opinion. If not-
May I just, may I just add one thing that I forgot to say?
Real brief, because we can't go back and forth.
Well, we're very brief.
Okay.
We have a problem here of zoning by variance. And when something is approved that does not comply, then the next neighbor, the next business next door, wants to do it. If the character of the neighborhood is to be preserved, then we need to apply the policies that we've all adopted. Otherwise, it gets harder and harder and harder to say no, and we'll move closer to the edge.
Thank you, Brett. If there's no one else here, oh, here we go. Come on, everybody, say something. It's your neighborhood. Come on.
Well, I'm Marnette Rochelle, 2601 Gilmary, 89102. I live in McNeil Estates. That was my sister that spoke.
Okay.
We're a true neighborhood. We've fought hard to keep our neighborhood a neighborhood. We have events such as doggy strolls. With Charleston backing up the way it is, and I grew up down at Fremont and 15th Street when I was young, and that neighborhood's nasty now.
Right.
Because businesses came in, and we don't want that to happen to McNeil. Please preserve our neighborhood.
We understand. Thank you very much. Okay, so no one else? I'm going to close the public hearing and open it up to the Planning Commissioners. As the chairperson, I can't make a motion, but I'd like to just say a few things about this. And I'm sorry you're the messenger. I'm very sorry. But I'm going to tell you that I've been driving by this area. It's been brought to my attention and the councilwoman's attention for months. And just today, I went there three times. I was there at 10:00 a.m., and I counted maybe six or eight people with children in the parking lot with cars. I pulled my son, I was in my son's van. I could barely get out, because it was so congested with just the few cars in the front. I went by at 1:00 and sat across the street, and I counted 30 people standing outside waiting to get in. And when the kids came out, they had balloons, and when the parents came out, I'm not quite sure what they had. And then, when I went back there right before 5:00 today, about 4:30, I counted about 45 people that were out in the parking lot, in the surrounding parking lots, and there was trash everywhere. It was disgraceful. And, and here's what I say about this property. You're, in my opinion, you're not going to get the landscape waiver, because you've overbuilt already with this amount of people that you're seeing at this site. I don't care if you add 5,000 more feet. It's too small. And what you're doing to the surrounding neighborhoods behind it, it makes me sad, and it's appalling. And people call me all the time, and they go, like, what's going on over there? And I go, well, I don't know. And, and somebody said, did you go in there today? And I said, no, I'm not going in there. This is, it's more than an eyesore. You will not see my support on the landscape. You will not see my support on the addition, but you will see my support if you want to pick it up and go move it somewhere else. It's too big and too big of a mess for the ward and for Charleston. There you go.[1406.01][1406.01](applause) So, with that, I have to, I'm going to open it up to my commissioners. They've all, they're, they've driven by it. They've done their thing. I can't make a motion, or I'd make it right now, but there you go. There you have it. So, we'll start with Commissioner Moody, or Mr. Slotman, or Byron, or Mr. Commissioner Flengus.
Just a couple of comments. I, I concur with everything the chairwoman said. I, too, went by there and saw it was an eyesore, and I think it speaks clearly on staff's October 4 field check, and it said the site was, was made to the rear portion of property where a proposed expansion is located. It said staff observed the location of a unscreened trash container located adjacent to the rear wall, two large dead trees, and that the entire rear property had been paved and curbed with concrete. So, if we have a business owner that doesn't take the pride in his business, it looks like what he's just doing here is reaping the benefits of the profit, and just pulling the money out and not doing anything. And I almost want to question. I know on February 16 of 2012, there was a business license issued for a medical firm, but I'd be curious to know what type of medical firm is he running. You don't typically see patients lined up outside the door of a professionally-run facility. So, it leads me to question what is actually going on there, and it will not see my support as well.
Thank you, Commissioner Goines. Commissioner Flengus?
Madam Chairman, seeing no further discussion on this matter, on item number 30, S D R 46577, I move to follow staff's recommendation to deny.
Thank you. The motion is for denial. Please cast your votes. A yes vote is for denial.
Madam Chair, may I ask?
Yes.
I'm just kind of, kind of curious with an important issue like this to a business owner. Why didn't he or she come down themselves?
Good question.
We're really sorry to yell. I mean, you're not, we're really sorry you're the messenger. We have to take the vote, or we're going to miss, you know, blow the laws here. So, let's vote. And Commissioner Truesdale abstained. This was denied tonight, and you let your owner know that he's got problems.
Okay.
Madam Chair, this item is final action in the absence of an appeal within 10 days.
So, final action, appeal in 10 days.
To the city clerk.
To city council.
Clerk.
Clerk, okay. Thank you. Moving on now to citizens. Thank you all for coming down this evening, too, by the way. Thank you very much. Moving on to citizens' participation. This is a time for public comment. During the portion of this agenda, it must be limited to matters within the jurisdiction of the Planning Commission. No subject may be acted upon by the Planning Commission unless that subject is on the agenda and is scheduled for action. If you wish to be heard, come to the podium, give your name and address for the record. The amount of discussion time on any single subject, as well as the amount of time allowed, the speaker may be limited. Mr. Farlow?
Yes, thank you. I've got a real bitch here.
My God.
When you can go in from a, from a, from a, from a regular business, and you allow, and you're approved with gaming, isn't there a number, say you've got five slot machines, don't you also have to have five parking spaces to go along with that?
You know what? Mr. Rankin knows that. This is his business. Doug?
The parking is based upon the gross square footage of the primary use. Gaming is considered an accessory use for most uses of convenience stores, and its accessory nature, therefore, doesn't require parking.
Okay. Commissioner Slotman, let's go back to, I want to, I'm commenting basically. It's, it's, it's based on item number 24. These people have two parking spaces in the back. They have maybe two parking spaces if you really convolute it in the front. And you, you gave them, I don't know how many slot machines there. I don't know.
Just a couple, just a few.
I mean, we're talking real ghetto here, and I don't understand how you can approve that. I just do not understand it.
Thank you, Mr. Farlow. I hope you go to city council and talk to them.
Oh, you know I will.
Oh, I know you will. I know you will. Good evening, sir.
Chambers, 3020 Mason Avenue, 89102. I'm a new citizen to Las Vegas. I moved here about 90 days ago.
Oh, welcome.
Thank you. It's a very wonderful city. I call Charleston my Charleston, because I go up and down it to Home Depots and Lowe's all the time.
That's nice.
But I've sat on, I've been a commissioner, a planning commissioner. My background is architecture, and I have to say to staff, I commend them on their recommendations, even the ones for denial. But what I was impressed with was how the commission looked at the denial recommendations and then used good planning sense to approve things. And I have to say, that's very encouraging to a city and to, to anybody that wants to do business in our city. So, I think everybody here works on the same page. Staff has a job to do. I think they do it, do it well. The one with the setback on the side yard, it's an unfortunate situation, but I think it'll be resolved in a manner which is, makes good sense. But you guys, as a team, need to, you know, when you're sitting around doing atta boys and atta girls, you ought to take a couple of minutes and do high fives, because you've done a great job here for somebody just coming in off the street looking at you.
Where'd you come from, sir?
I lived in Temecula, California.
Oh, nice.
We had another home up in San Luis Obispo.
Well, we welcome you.
Thank you. Hope to see you guys again.
Thank you. This meeting is over, and thank you all for coming.